and Zoning Board. Before we get started, if everyone would rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, nihite justice.
Thank you for that. Before we get into the meeting, we have circulated the minutes from the June, 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 June 15th, 2022 meeting. And if there's any clarifications, let's address them. Otherwise, if I could get a motion? So we have a motion from John Bronco, a second from Steve Gannon. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next up, we do have a quorum. To my left is Ms. Mary Furtig, down below Bill Rotella, Steve Gannon to my right, and John Bronco to my far right, and I'm Mike Weymouth. Ella and DeWayne, would you like to introduce your staff so that we know who's here tonight with you?
Sure. Good evening. Ella Parker, Urban Design and Planning. Our recording secretary tonight is Ms. Jamie Operly. She's at the front. From our planning, Urban Design and Planning staff, we have Jim Hetzel, Carlin Grant, Adam Schnell, Yvonne Redding, Mike Ferreira, Lorraine Tappin. From Public Works, we have Steve Hilmer. And our assistant city attorneys are DeWayne Spence and Sharie Wallen. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. If you plan to speak tonight, we're going to ask you to rise and be sworn in. So if you plan on speaking on any item tonight, please.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear firm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Okay. Thank you. All right. We're going to start with item number one, which is case UDP Z22002. Before we hear the case, let's go with disclosures. Mary?
Yes.
Bill?
No disclosures.
Steve?
No disclosures.
Mr. Bronco?
Spoke to applicant's attorney.
And I spoke with the applicant's counsel as well.
All right.
Good evening, Chair. Members of the Board, Andrew Schein with Lockery and Chalkus, here representing the property owner. This is for a rezoning. The property is located on Northwest 19th Street, west of I-95. This is a far aerial. This is a close aerial. The majority of the property is currently vacant. Part of the rezoning is a little slice of that western property where there's currently a concrete cutting yard. And they're single-family residential to the north. The property is currently zoned C1, which is a Broward County zoning district. When this property was annexed, the city didn't rezone this area, and it's been sort of piecemeal rezoning since. But the property is on C1, which is a heavy commercial district at the county. The C1 zoning district allows for things like concrete cutting yards, boat repair, auto repair, some heavy-type commercial and light industrial uses. This is the property outlined in red, and we are proposing to rezone it to CB, which is community business. It's the same zoning district to the south across 19th Street. And the community business is a little self-defining. It's meant for community businesses, so things like restaurants, light retail. I'll briefly go through the zoning criteria. The first is that the zoning, the zoning district proposes consistent with the city's comprehensive plan. As I said, the, let's go here. The comprehensive plan is, it currently has a future land use designation of commercial. And as I said before, the C1 zoning district, the current one, allows a lot of these really heavy commercial and light industrial uses. So by rezoning it to a community business, we're actually making this property more consistent with the comprehensive plan than it is today. It doesn't have an industrial future land use, even though it has things like concrete cutting yards. So we're downzoning the property to CB and making it more consistent with the comprehensive plan. The second is that changes anticipated by the proposed rezoning will not adversely impact the character of development in or near the area. This is a graphic showing what's around the area right now. To the west, where it's zoned C1, is a heavy commercial use, some medical office. There is some retail sprinkled in. To the east is low-intensity retail office. To the south, on the 19th Street corridor, is low-intensity retail and restaurant. And then single-family flanking on the north and south. As I said before, we're making this more consistent with the comprehensive plan and more consistent with the neighborhood. We're zoned to community business, which is meant for businesses in a residential community, as opposed to concrete, things like concrete cutting yards, which are permitted today, which is really inconsistent with the pattern of development in the area. The third is that the character of the area is suitable for the uses permitted in the proposed zoning district and compatible with the surrounding districts, very similar to the second criteria. And here is just some of the list of permitted uses in the CB. On the left, you can see a bunch of crossed-out ones. Those are currently permitted now without the rezoning. Things like gun ranges, warehousing, bottled gas filling and distribution. And this is the criteria of being compatible with the surrounding districts. So those are not compatible with single-family uses immediately to the north. But what is permitted in CB, you can see on the right side of the screen, things like banks, general retail, hair salons, restaurants. So by rezoning to this, we are making it more compatible with the surrounding area. We are proposing a Dollar General. That is not coming in front of you tonight. Tonight is just the rezoning. Next month, the site plan will be coming to Planning and Zoning Board, since if it's in CB, it's required to be approved by the Planning and Zoning Board if it's over a certain square footage. So tonight is just the rezoning, but we will be coming in with the site plan next month. We did meet with the neighbors twice on this. The first was towards the beginning of the project. We met in person at the regularly scheduled Rock Island Community Development Association meeting. And we met more recently, about 40 days ago, via Zoom for the folks who weren't able to make the in-person meeting. And we do have a letter of support from the Neighborhood Association, fully supporting both the rezoning and the Dollar General. I can pass those out, if you don't mind, Mr. Bronco. Take one, pass it down, please. But we do have full support of the Neighborhood Association. And again, tonight is just the rezoning. Thank you. And I'm here if you have any questions.
Thank you. Does anybody have a question for Mr. Schein? Seeing none. Do we have anybody in the audience that would like to speak to this item? Why don't you come up, ma'am, please? When you get to the podium, please state your name. You were sworn in. You were sworn in, correct? You were sworn in. Thank you.
I'm Dr. Nadine Hankerson, and I live behind the establishment that is going to be rezoned. I'm at 2511 Northwest 18th Court. The only problem that I have with it is that Rock Island is not the only association or homeowner associations that they should have reached out to. It should have been the, also, it should have included Lake Eyre, which is a part of, whose homes sit behind the establishments, as well as the Lauderdale Manners. That strip is zoned for Lauderdale Manners. And the rest of them on the south side is the Lake Eyre. And I'm hoping before you build it is that you reach out to all the homeowners. The, on the north side is the Rock Island Homeowners Association. So all of us have not been reached out to.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Schein, would you like to respond to that?
Very, very briefly. If we can talk after, I'll give you my card, and we can discuss before the next Planning and Zoning Board meeting. Tonight is just the rezoning. Again, it's not the site plan. So I will reach out before next month's meeting for the site plan. But we did also send out letters to all homeowners within 300 feet of the property advertising of the public participation meeting. It might not have gotten all of the Palm Air to the south. And you could see on the, this is Rock Island up top, and the other neighborhoods are to the south here behind this commercial corridor. But we can definitely connect before the next Planning and Zoning Board meeting. But again, tonight is just the rezoning, not the actual site plan.
Great. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to this item? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it back. Is it desire of this board to not only on this case, but on all cases include the staff recommendations?
Yes.
Mary moves?
Steve seconds.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Does anybody on the board want to discuss in any detail this item or make a motion?
I would say that, that, again, the fact that the council did not reach out to all the neighborhoods in this case doesn't matter so much because it's just the zoning. And there's no one objecting to the zoning. I can't imagine anyone objecting to a downzoning like that anyway. So, so I'd say we don't have to worry about that. I agree. I think we should proceed with.
Are you making a motion?
Make a motion to, if I can read the whole thing correctly. Make a motion, a motion to approve the rezoning from Commercial Warehouse, C1 County to Community Business, CB. We've already said to conclude the staff reports on every one of these. And.
Okay. We have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a second from Mary. Any further? We have a second from Mary. Any further discussion? Madam, call the rule, please.
Ms. Fertig?
Yes.
Mr. Gannon?
Yes.
Mr. Rotella?
Yes.
Mr. Bronco?
Yes.
Chair Weymouth?
Yes, thank you. Motion passes. All right. Next item coming up, case number UDP Z22004. Before we hear from Ms. Toothaker, Mary, any disclosures?
Yes, I visited the site and I spoke with Ms. Toothaker.
Mr. Rotella?
I spoke to Ms. Toothaker.
Mr. Gannon?
Spoke to Ms. Toothaker.
Mr. Bronco?
Visited the site and spoke to applicant's attorney.
And I did a site visit and traded messages with the applicant's counsel. Didn't speak to her directly, but exchanged information. So, all right. Ms. Toothaker, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, members of the Planning and Zoning Board. Stephanie Toothaker. I'm here on behalf of Home Venture Investments. Tal and Eric are in the audience with me, my clients. But my client is technically the First Ebbe Dzer Church, which is proposed for rezoning along with some other properties. And I'm just going to walk through a quick PowerPoint. So this is the subject proper, everything that you see outlined in red. So there's, I actually have authorization letters from all the various property owners that are in the packet, if you'd like to review them. So everybody that owns property in this block is requesting zoning to Northwest Rack. And here, we're just showing you the future land use. It's already Northwest Regional Activity Center, so the land use is consistent with the proposed zoning. And here's just some images of the various properties that are all put together for the potential rezoning. And here they are. And you can see, I think this is the best image to show, basically what's happening is most of the properties around here have already been rezoned to be consistent with the existing land use that the city had done a land use plan amendment quite some time ago. So this just brings these properties into compliance with what already exists in the neighborhood. These are just some other rezonings that this board considered and approved over the course of time. And again, you can just see that we're trying to bring this into compliance with what exists in the neighborhood. And just a note on the rezoning criteria, it does meet all the criteria. Staff did a really good job going through the analysis. And the proposed rezoning is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan, applicable goals, objectives, and policies, specifically the future land use element goal two, objective 2.4, which encourages revitalization of redevelopment areas and development to be consistent with the Northwest Progresso Flagler Heights redevelopment plan. It goes on to say, and I don't need to read the whole thing, but the character of the area proposed is suitable for the uses permitted in the proposed zoning district. And in fact, the staff report says that rezoning of properties to the Northwest Rack MU is in alignment with the neighborhood's goal of supporting redevelopment opportunities and has the potential of increasing housing opportunities and local employment. And in the next provision, with the character of the surrounding area, the rezoning to the Northwest Rack actually ensures compliance with the development standards that are required by the Northwest Rack master plan. We do have a letter of support from Progresso Village. We did a public participation meeting on June 20th, and we also made a presentation to Progresso Village. And that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for Ms. Toothaker? Seeing none, is there anybody from the public who would like to speak on this item? Seeing none, we're going to close the public portion of this, bring it back to the board. Any dialogue, comments, motions?
Just one comment, probably a question for you, Stephanie.
Yes.
And one of the graphics you showed, where you demonstrated where it was part of the Northwest Rack zoning.
Mm-hmm, yes.
You showed the street was still a little yellow strip. Go to the, yeah, that one. Wouldn't the street itself turn purple too? I mean, it won't turn purple, but you know what I mean.
So we worked with, yes, I would think it would. But we worked with staff on the survey that was submitted as part of it, and this was the direction that we were given. So typically, you would at least go to the center.
Right, it usually goes to the center line.
Of the right of way, absolutely.
That's the only thing I noticed that was a little odd when I saw it in color like that. So, and I guess staff could look at it. But otherwise, it makes sense to me. Thanks.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, we wouldn't have any objection to that.
Yeah.
Any other comments?
Excuse me, if, the member could repeat that? We didn't hear it clearly.
Would the, Duane, there?
I was just looking at the graphic up there, Duane.
Mm-hmm.
And the street is still shown in yellow, as if it weren't rezoned. Typically, those rezoning lines go to a property line or a center line of street.
Correct.
So I thought that was odd, and just pointed it out. I think it should go to the center line.
That's correct. And it would be, will be corrected at City Commission.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
We can update the survey as well.
Mary, did you have a comment or question?
I'll just have a motion when you're ready.
Feel free to make a motion.
Okay. I move to recommend approval of case number UDP Z22004, based on the findings of fact and the staff report and the testimony heard tonight.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion before we call the rule? Madam Secretary, please call the rule.
Ms. Fertig?
Yes.
Mr. Gannon?
Yes.
Mr. Rotella?
Yes.
Mr. Bronco?
Yes.
And Chair Weymouth?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So before we move forward, we're going to accelerate case number 11. For those that don't want to sit through a bunch of discussions on parks, and if you do, you're welcome to stick around afterwards. But I would like to move case number 11 up to number three, which is case number UDP A22007, if the applicant is ready to present. Are you representing for the applicant, sir? Are you ready? Is it okay with you if we go early?
Yes, my associate's just arrived.
While he's coming up, let's go ahead and get disclosures. Mary?
I visited the site. I spoke, I have received several letters. One from Barbie Pearson, an email today on behalf of the, hang on, Lauderdale Beach homeowners? I'm trying to find that sheet. And I also received, I'm trying to find all my emails, but you all probably received the same ones that were transmitted to us from.
The petition.
And I also spoke with Dr. Alan Zeeman, who spoke on behalf of Dolphin Isles. And I think that's everybody. And I said I visited the site, right? Because I did.
Bill?
Okay, thank you.
Bill?
I had all the same letters, no site visit, but all the same letters.
Steve?
I had site visit, email communications from neighboring associations and the condo, and communication by phone with Alan Zeeman of Dolphin Isles, and attended a public presentation, as well as a site visit.
John?
Site visit and communications from staff that they received from folks in the neighborhood.
And I too did a site visit, and I received all the same emails and communications. Okay. Good evening, sir. Please state your name.
Yes, my name is Richard Berry, Berry Architecture and Design. I'm the architect on the projects. I'm representing the owner on the project. The project itself, this is Cambria Hotel and Suites. I don't know if you can see this on the monitors I see myself and not the.
Yes.
Or not the screen. But anyway, okay, great. Thank you. Cambria Hotel and Suites was approved and opened in January of '21. It replaced three older motels. The project was approved with a rooftop terrace area, which is used by the hotel for views of the ocean. There's seating, lounge seating up there. Patrons are served beverages. And what we're looking to do is literally, we're looking to put a permanent bar up there, which will serve as the seating area. This is, literally is a view from White Egr. I think they, that it shows the area as it is right now. So we're not asking for rooftop terraces. We're not asking for anything more than to physically take a portable bar and services and make it a permanent bar. The bar itself would be, have a solid back, opaque back in a trellis roof structure. One of the reasons we're doing this is because we want to block views and any noise that would go towards the condo to our west. And that way, we can make it more private. And it literally is an area that is going to be, as you can see in these graphics, we have it so that it is set back substantially beyond what the original setbacks. The original setback of the building at 50 feet was 25 feet. And we are just increasing it. We're, I believe, nine foot eight from the east facade, plus the 25. And the project, the height of the restroom and the roof of the bar is 64 feet. So we're looking at 32 feet setback, and we exceed that. The closest is to the east, and we're literally substantially, the back of the restroom is basically 18 feet back. So these are all structures. Right now, on the hotel, let me go back. The corner stairs, the stairs and such are literally at 70 feet, 8 inches high. So we're not going higher than what's there. And we're substantially lower than that central feature that we were, that we put in there. And as you will see in the elevations, it will really be obscured from views. And we had presented this numerous times. We've dealt with staff on this. Originally, I sent out notices per the information I received from staff to the community. We've also been involved and work closely with the Central Beach Alliance. The President, William Smith, not only has sent a letter of support, I know they had a vote on it, and I believe that it went 130 to 97 for all the HOAs in there. And we, he also showed up at the public presentation. At that time, only two people showed up at the presentation. It was Haye and one other person who was a board member from the Dolphin Isles. And we were there for several hours. I've sent out several notifications for both DRC, for public participation, and have really diligently tried to cover all of my tracks. As far as anything, there was some concern about noise. We concur that they're going to keep any music down low, that they're not going to have bands up there, rock and roll, or any major amplifier. I believe we got an email about the decibel levels that we would like to keep to, which we will adhere to. And we will definitely work with the city planners on any other item that comes up.
Thank you, sir. Are there any questions for the applicant? Mary?
Yes, and they, we received a letter from the Central Beach Alliance with asking for three conditions, limiting the sound played to light music without amplification, live entertainment not to exceed a single musician, compliance with the City of Fort Lauderdale noise ordinance. And then, we received one from the Lauderdale Beach North. And they asked for shrubbery around the mechanical buildings. Are those all things that you're willing to comply with?
Hello, good evening. Jay Matwani. I'm president, CEO of Hotel Motel, and I'm the developer-owner of the Cambria Hotel. So I want to thank each and every one of you for your time tonight. Yes, we've agreed to all of those conditions. We've agreed to the shrubbery. We've agreed to the noise ordinance or the settings that they've requested us to do. And we look to be a good, law-abiding citizen and a great community activist in our area. And anything that we can do to make sure that our residents and our neighbors are happy, we'll be happy to oblige.
Any other questions from you, Mary? Any other questions from the board? Okay, at this time, we're going to open up the public comment portion of it. Is there anybody here that is wanting to speak on this item tonight? If so, if so, please come forward. I would ask, we afford a little more time to neighborhood and building condominium presidents. So if you are a condominium president or a neighborhood president, please let me know so I can afford you five minutes instead of three. Okay. Please step forward and introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm Barbie Pearson, and I'm Secretary of the Lauderdale Beach Homeowners Association. The board had met, and, not met, but they just, they agree that it's a great project going forward. And some of the neighborhood comments, they, a lot of them have family that stay there. They occasionally eat in the restaurant, and they look forward to using the rooftop bar and socializing. And as we do with the music, the main thing was, from the letter, I'm going to read it. "Please consider this acknowledgment that the Lauderdale Beach Homeowners Association Board of Directors has reviewed the case and approves of the granting of this request of the Cambria Hotel to construct and operate a rooftop bar in accordance with the city noise ordinances, et cetera." And we had, we had all heard the presentation, and a lot of the neighborhood, they're very happy and looking forward to it. The other, and I'm not going to go into that, but I got an email. The Dolphin Isles President, Alan Zeeman, wasn't able to be here, but he forwarded to me, to forward to you, basically. And I think you've received the letter, so I'm not going to read the whole thing. But his board and group, they saw the architectural site plan, the drawings, and they feel it fits well with the neighborhood, and they voted unanimously in support of the project. So you should have received an email with his words from that, but I just quickly summarized his point of view as well. So a couple of neighborhoods were real happy with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir, please state your name.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Stephen Sowards. I'm the general manager at the Aberrish Beach Residences and Spa, located right across the street from the Cambria Hotel. And just briefly, we wanted to let the Planning and Zoning Commission know that we support this project 100% as directly located across the street with 171 units of very high-end luxury condominiums that's at beachfront, directly across from the Cambria, that they've been outstanding partners with us on things like the air show, seeing air show, parking, other issues that have come up. They've been great partners with us at the Aberrish Residences and Spa, and we support this initiative for their rooftop bar to be right across the street from us with 171 units overlooking that rooftop. And they've been great partners and taken our feedback for some of those additional, you know, shrubberies and the other things. So we support it 100%. Thanks.
Thank you. Good evening. Please state your name.
Hello, good evening. My name is Alethea Guardiali, and I'm actually a resident in the Fort Lauderdale Homes, like, in the beach area. And we've been there for almost 15-plus years. Just wanted to say that the Cambria has been a beautiful addition to our area. We've visited it plenty of times, not just with our family, but our neighbors and our friends. The restaurants, the rooftop area is a fantastic addition to our neighborhood. It's, you know, in our backyard. We've had guests that have come in from out of town and use the area. They're really excited about kind of being a little bit away from the strip. And we think the rooftop is just a really, really nice asset for us to be able to use. The service there is fantastic, the rooms and the food, the accommodations. So we're really excited to have that property in our area, right in our backyard, essentially.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Pearl Fice, and we live over at the Palms, directly across from the Cambria. And we have had experience with a bar across from your home, your residence. And when Salt Seven went in across from the La Solis Grand. And when Salt Seven went in across from the La Solis Grand, it was a bar music, and we were very happy to welcome them into the neighborhood, except that the music was unbearable with the sound. The level, the sound level was so strong that we were not able to sleep in our bedrooms at night. What, how do we know that your level is not going to be so bad that we are not going to get it at the Palms? And the Auberge is right across, and they'll be in the same position, too. The noise level rises, and when you can't sleep in your own home, that's unfortunate. We're happy to have your bar. I think it'd be a beautiful thing. But how do we know that you're not going, once you get that license, you're not going to have the music that you want at the level you want, because we'll have no say in it?
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak on this item? Are you coming forward? No? Okay. Seeing no one else, we're going to close the public portion of this meeting and bring it back to the board. Does anybody have any discussion or comments?
I've got lots of questions.
Fire away.
Um, sorry, who was the staff member?
Speaking of the microphone, John.
Stan.
Who's the staff member for this project, City of Fort Lauderdale? If this was approved with a rooftop, why are we even talking about this project right now? I don't understand why it would come back for such a minor modification.
With the addition of the bar and the structure over the bar, it raises the total height of the hotel from 50 feet to 60 feet and three inches.
So, that would have exceeded that, whatever the 5%, 10% rule?
I'm sorry, say that again.
That exceeds the 5% or 10% rule that you guys always apply, that you can make a modification without it?
For the RMH 60 zoning district, the maximum setback is one-half the height unless you seek a yard modification from the Planning and Zoning Board.
Okay, so let me ask the next question. I sound weird, don't I? This thing sounds so amplified.
It's actually quite nice.
Really? Okay. So, if they had not put that roof structure over the top of the bar, which will effectively block sound, could they have opened or operated a bar up there as is, as it was permitted originally?
Uh, no, no, with, with the bar, once you add the bar, just the bar piece, that raises the overall height of the building.
It, those bars, I'm looking at it, they didn't look any higher than any of the structures that are there now. There are stairwells, there's, there's an existing elevator shaft that goes up to the top of the roof. So, a bar, you know, just open to the sun, it's not the use that would, they could do that tomorrow, couldn't they? Couldn't they serve beers up there and have live music tomorrow without a roof?
The, I mean, the rooftop terrace, I mean, basically, the, it's habitable, but once you start adding that extra activity, then you have to relook at the height of the whole structure.
Hotels in the City of Fort Lauderdale are permitted to have those types of amenities, right? And there isn't extra parking or anything else required for these things?
Yeah, but then you have to, once you add those amenities to the top, when, when you go beyond having just a couple chairs and you add a bar or other items that might provide service, you have to start looking at how high, the overall height of the building. It changes the equation.
I, I'd read the code forwards and backwards, and I'm not clear on what you're telling me, because I don't see that as being a requirement one way or another. I don't have to get that specific on what we're doing there. You know, how far are we going to restrict it? Are we going to say no birthday parties? I mean, the use is a use for the patrons, and if they want to serve beers up there and wine and have music, I don't see where our code really speaks to that. So, I find it odd that by them doing a good thing and blocking sound and making the building a little bit bigger, that we're here in front of the Planning and Zoning Board. It seems like kind of a waste of the developers' time. The other thing that I noticed in the set of drawings that I hear, I have here that were modified, um, there's a screening detail for all the equipment on the roof. Did you see that detail?
The screening detail?
Yeah, the one that was approved on the original site plan. It doesn't look like it was ever revised, but it clearly doesn't match what, what is installed and placed now. So, it, it shows a metal louver that you can't see through at all. And I've been through this recently with the City of Fort Lauderdale, and we had screens similar to what is shown on Cambria. And the neighbors are justified in asking for additional screening because it doesn't even match what was approved. And I'm curious why the City of Fort Lauderdale is not enforcing what we approve here as a board, or what, what city staff is approving. Because we had a similar condition on another project. We had the inspectors come out, and the building owner had to add more screening after it was already approved. In this case, it's egregious what happened because they show the correct detail, and it was built differently, and nobody did anything about it. Now, that becomes an issue, and you're here again, or they're here again, and it's still an issue, because you can clearly see those in the, in the photographs that were provided by the adjacent neighbors. So, that should definitely be addressed by the city, not as part of this, because it's already, it's already approved with that detail.
And you're correct.
I don't know why, I don't even know why we're talking about that right now. It's just odd, so.
I, well, you're correct. If the screening doesn't match the approved plans, or if it's not adequately, if it doesn't meet the ULDR in matching the material of the building, then it's something that needs to be fixed.
Right. So, I, I, I just wanted to get that off my chest, because I, I just don't see why this is here in the first place. It seems like something staff could have taken care of, and...
So, if, if I could, Mr. Baranco, the project as it was originally approved did not include a habitable rooftop space. It was approved at 50 feet. Originally, when the applicant came in, if they wanted to propose an accessory restaurant space up there or a rooftop bar, they could have, but they didn't. And since we calculate our height via zoning per the maximum, you know, slab, and versus this, this potential project, which has the rooftop bar, the height actually did get readjusted by 10 feet, which in effect changes, to Lorraine's previous point, the yard modification that was, that was also approved by this board. So, that is the reason that staff cannot approve this administratively. It's specific in the code, and that is why it's in front of the board tonight.
Ella, thank you. I don't have the photograph. I think it was in one of the emails that I received. There was a picture from one of the neighboring properties. Am I wrong in saying that something exists on the rooftop now? I, I thought I saw an existing rooftop area.
I assume that rooftop image was the proposed rooftop image.
What is that?
I think that's the, this is the proposed.
Can't, uh...
No, this is existing rooftop terrace.
That's an existing rooftop terrace, right? Am I crazy? Is that existing?
That's what we've been provided as existing.
And that's an elevator that has got to be 20 feet higher than the roof. So, I'm, again, um...
The elevator is not included in the overall height of the building. You have to go up to the, the habitable space, uh, and the, I don't have a...
That's right. You could have an elevator for maintenance reasons, and that does not count towards the height if the rooftop is not a livable, habitable space.
All right, I'm going right back to it. So, we've got a developer who's going to put a roof over this thing to shield the bar, mitigate noise, do all the right things. He could open a bar up there today, as far as I'm concerned. You could serve beers up there today.
It's the way the code is written. It height, it counts as a 10-foot higher height limitation, and therefore changes the yard modification. That, you know, when you look at the way that the height is defined in the city zoning code, we followed exactly that via zoning. And unfortunately, because now it's habitable, it triggers that higher limitation.
And then you can see the screening issue, Ella. And it, it just, that one just irritates me to no end, because one of my clients was called on this, and it held up its CO. And we went down to the city and spoke to staff. They're like, well, that's what the code says. And here we are with an approved building, it's built, and there, the neighbors are asking for additional screening, when the screening that was approved doesn't even match what's there. And, you know, it's just something that irritates me, that some projects are called a task and others aren't. And it's not fair.
I think you make a valid, I think you bring up a valid concern to Lorraine's point. We will look at that in detail. We have run into these issues in the past, and we, we're trying to sort of correct them and make sure that folks are aware of what the mechanical screening requirements are prior to getting to building permit. But, um, you know, we'll, we'll definitely take that under account and, and look into that for this project. Thank you.
All right, that's all.
Is that it, John? Are there any other questions or comments from the board? Hearing seen none. Does anyone want to make a motion?
Oh, Mr. Chair, if I could correct a couple items in the staff report?
Okay.
Uh, one is on the front page under Plicable ULDR Sections. The first one should read 47 dash, excuse me, 47-5.38 for the Table of Dimensional Requirements for RMH 60 districts. And, uh, we had some communication regarding the condition, and we also discussed it with the applicant. In the resolution that you received today, we have language in there changing the condition to, "The applicant shall not amplify the music to a sound level above what is permitted by the city's Code of Ordinances, and the applicant shall limit live entertainment to not exceed one musician."
Do you still want to make a motion?
Yeah. Is that okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Um, I'm going to move, hold on, to, I'm going to move to adopt the resolution approving a site plan Level 3, case number UDP A22007, based on the findings in the staff report, the testimony tonight, communications received, with the following conditions only. I'm going to make my conditions, if it's okay with everybody, the conditions that came from the Central Beach Alliance and the, um, other condo buildings, and those were...
Sorry. Just wanted to make sure that you read them, so that they're included in the record for Jamie to write down.
Yeah, I have it right, right here.
Uh, yes, but we have to include them in the record, so could you read them?
Yes, that's what I was going to do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, limit the sound played to light music without amplification, li, live entertainment not to exceed a central, a single musician. We can change that to one musician, if you want that word, but I, I would like to stick as closely as possible to see what Central Beach Alliance did. Compliance with the City of Fort Lauderdale noise ordinance. And, um, and the fourth one was from the condo across, one of the surrounding condos, shrubbery and screening around the mechanical, which will hopefully address some of the issues that John's raised. So, that's my motion.
Would you also like to add the additional staff recommendations that Lorraine just read to us? That were in the staff report?
Uh, yes, it's in the resolution that she did the motion to approve.
Yeah, they're, they're the same. I'm just sticking to this verbiage.
So, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Steve Gannon, seconds.
May I read the resolution? "A resolution of the Planning and Zoning Board of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, approving a site plan Level 3 development permit for the addition of a rooftop bar, canopy structure, and restroom, and modification of yards for an existing hotel located at 2231 North Ocean Boulevard, Fort Lauderdale, Florida, case number UDP A22007."
All right. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gan, Mr. Gannon?
Approve.
Mr. Otella?
Yes.
Mr. Baranco?
Yes.
Ms. Firding?
Yes.
And Sherwin.
Yes. All right. So, the next, it appears, eight items are of similar nature. Do we have to hear these one at a time, or can we hear these collectively and then vote on them singularly?
That was the intention. Mike has prepared a presentation to present them all at the same time, and then you'll have to vote on them individually.
That would be wonderful. That's very expeditious.
Thank you.
And greatly appreciated. I did not happen to look, are they all being presented by the same person? So, we've got Michael Ferreira, Michael Ferreira. Michael Ferreira is on board.
Hi, good evening, uh...
Good evening, Michael.
Good evening, board members. Michael Ferreira, urban planner and case planner for the next eight items.
Do you want to do disclosures for all of them?
Oh, didn't realize that. Okay. Mary, do you have any disclosures?
Um, I visited the sites, and, um, does it count if I recently met with staff about parks in general, and we talked about these eight? So, I'll just say that.
Bill?
No disclosures. None.
Steve?
No disclosure.
No disclosures from me. Would you like me to read in the case numbers before the presentation?
Yes, please.
Okay. First one, or, or the first one of the group is going to be case number 3, UDP Z2205. Next is case number UDP Z22006, case number UDP Z2207, case number UDP Z22008. Is there no 09? I guess there's no 09. So, next one is case number UDP Z22010, case number UDP Z22011, case number UDP Z22012, and finally, case number UDP Z22013. All right. Michael, back to you, young man.
Thank you. Uh, so, I'm just going to give a brief summary of how we got here today. So, back in September, the board sent out a communication to the City Commission to request that staff take a look at the parks that are in the downtown area and to check to see if those were, those parks were zoned for park. So, in the October 21 City Commission meeting, the City Commission expanded on that request and asked that the, um, that they include the park, all parks within the, within the city. So, the Development Services and the Parks and Recreation Department compiled a list of approximately 30 parks that are currently parks but need to be rezoned to parks that have varying zoning districts. So, um, sorry. Because there are several parks that need to be rezoned, like I said, about approximately 30, we've decided that they're going to be carried out in phases. So, depending on how many parks we rezonate at one given time, you know, whether they're eight or 10 parks, we may have to do it within, you know, three or four phases. Uh, so, what you have before you this evening is Phase 1 of, of the phases, which includes eight parks. And I'm here to answer any questions you may have, and we also have a member of the Parks and Recreation Department as well.
Are there any questions from the board?
Just one, curious. Are they, every one of these properties used as parks now, or they're just, are they all used as parks right now?
They're, right now, they're all used as parks.
So, there's, it's not like we're going to change a residential house to a park.
Absolutely not, no.
Okay. All right, thank you.
And, and just, I just want to add, and I want to really commend staff, both the Parks and Rec staff and the planning staff for having brought these eight forward, and for the others that you're planning to bring forward. But just for the information of the public as a whole, of the, on the park's website, there are 120 properties and facilities, and slightly under half of those are not zoned park, which means they don't have the protections that we see on the charter. So, this is a great project that they've done, and, um, and I, just, some of these properties, when I drove them, they're, they're built out with wing sets and parks and benches, and if you were in the neighborhood, you would think this was your park. And, um, and likewise, the property up by the airport is just gorgeous, wild trees and, I mean, it's just beautiful. So, thank you so much for having done this.
You're welcome.
And I hope we, the end, well, I'll do that in the motion.
Any other questions or comments before we open it up to the public? Any other questions or comments before we open it up to the public? Seeing, hearing none. Is there anybody here that would like to speak on any one of the eight items? Good evening, ma'am. Were you sworn in?
Yes, I was.
Okey-dokey. If you'll please introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm Nancy Long, River Oaks Civic Association President, and I'm talking about case number four, UDP Z two-two-zero-zero-six, and we want to thank you for rezoning this so we get to keep this little park in our little neighborhood. We don't have any other around us but this one, so we're hoping to go forward and zone it as a park and it doesn't turn into something else. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I thought she was coming up to speak. Is there anybody else from the public that'd like to talk on this?
Good evening. My name is April Young, and we're at zone number UDP Z two-two-zero-zero-five. That's the park. Definitely is a great interest to us, being residents there, and our family members in the community would definitely like to have some of the items as far as committed, communities in the area to be enhanced and beautified and to address some of the entrance and possibly the rezoning maps that we have actually seen. So, we're looking forward to this project to actually bring alive or bring life to our area park, and that it will be a zoo rent for everybody else to be able to enhance some of the beautifications that's gonna be taking place. And we're just gonna ask that the board remembers that we would like to utilize that park and be able to take our pets versus our family members to that area. So, we're ready. Thank you very kindly.
Thank you.
Hi, it's Barbie Pearson. I just want to also thank the staff and the projects moving forward, as they said they're doing them in phases. And we're real happy, and just as a general statement, I think going forward, you know, in phases, and I think it's a fantastic project. And things need to be designated or zoned as such, as Mary had said, to protect these areas. And, and also as far as, well, this one isn't on it, but protecting our beach. Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am, please step forward. Have you been sworn in?
No, I haven't.
One more. She'll swear you in.
Please, please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, ma'am. Please state your name.
Hi, my name is Colleen Tessima, and we're just a resident in Victoria Park. And particularly of interest is UDP Z two-two-zero-one-two, which is at two North Victoria Park. We live at one North Victoria Park, so we're right across from the park. Beautiful area, cute little park. We weren't sure what it was about, but I think you've established that it's just to secure the, you know, the zoning integrity, so we're happy with that. This may not be the right forum, but we have expressed concern about the safety of that particular area, because if you ever come abrowed as it curves to the park, it's so sharp, there's been so many accidents. And I have written to Judy Erickson and whoever would listen to us to express our concern because we have kids and pets and just people having a good time in our park, but so far, they have not enhanced any of the safety measures, i.e., speed limits. I've listed so many, but it's not my call as to say what it should be, but I just want to share with anyone who would listen that they need to do something because we could get on the news for the wrong reason. People do all kinds of stuff there. They, they come down the wrong way, they come down too fast, they end up there at three o'clock in the morning on a tree only because of the curvature, and we need to have something to slow people down. So, that's it.
So, this is not the right forum for that, ma'am, but I strongly suggest you reach out to the Parks and Recreation Department, and they, they can take it from there.
Right. But we came tonight simply to understand what this motion was about, and I think we are happy that it's to ensure that the zoning is secured. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I, can I just add one thing to, just, can I just add one thing to that?
Sure.
The irony of this particular piece of property is it's contiguous to Annibek Park, which is zoned P, and this portion did not get zoned P, so this is really a great thing for your neighborhood.
Thank you.
And I would hopefully, hopefully you can bring up to the district commissioner, too, about the speeding.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to one of these eight items? Yes, please.
My name is Radamis Morales.
I'm sorry. Have you been sworn in, sir? Okay. You're gonna need to be sworn in, then I'll ask you to step up to the podium. No, no, just raise your right hand. She'll swear you in right there. You don't have to go any further. Just raise your right hand.
Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
No.
Thank you. So, you should go to the podium so we can hear you.
Go to the podium and speak into the microphone, please.
I don't know if I have the right case. I have a case over here, case number four, UDP Z two-two-zero-zero-six. Is that the case that you're treating?
That's one of the ones that we're talking about. Yes, sir. Feel free to speak on it.
You know, as a concerned citizen and neighbor of this park, we have almost two decades living adjacent, and it's practically part of our property, the park, and the park is part of our property. When you go up to the park, you can't miss our house. And the noises of the children playing with the toys and families coming down, bringing from their animals to the children, adults, and we're gonna be losing that. And really shocking that we didn't have any prior notice that the city was intending to convert this park into some kind of a residential. We just passed by the park and see that there's a sign over there that says it's construction coming. I don't know if we're late, but there's a lot of us opposing it. Where do we go to file an opposition to this project? It's taking away from our community, and we need a park.
I, sir, I, I think you're getting exactly what you want. They're preserving the park. They're not taking the park away.
Oh.
Yeah. So, it's the opposite. So, you should be very happy if you want to keep the park.
That's the case.
That's exactly what we want.
Yeah.
But they have construction, housing, a draft, or is it a, a drawing, a proof that shows like it's gonna be development in the area. Is that true? Or am I reading wrong?
No, I believe they're proposing the zoning to be park.
Open space. They're going from the PUD to open space on that item.
So, they're gonna preserve that space as a park.
They're gonna prove what?
They're gonna preserve it as a park.
As a park?
Yes.
And no housing?
No.
Coming down?
No.
Oh, that's good news, sir.
Yeah.
Thank you, sir.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak on any one of these eight items? Seeing and hearing none, we'll close the public comment portion of this and bring it back to the board for any ongoing comment. Anybody have anything more they want to weigh in on?
Chair, I'm sorry, Assistant City Attorney D. Wayne Spence. With regards to item number four, UDP Z twenty-two-zero-zero-six, it's currently part of a PUD rezoning and a part of that ordinance, C zero-four-twenty-one. It was conditioned to be rezoned to park, but it also contains a number of park property conditions. It's, was kind of an odd way to rezone it because this rezoning it to park may in fact remove some of those conditions. So, what I would appreciate is if the board would state on the record whether or not they want to retain the conditions that are in the PUD ordinance as part of this rezoning.
Each member or as part of the motion?
As part of the motion for item number four.
All right. So, since item number, item number four is a little bit different and you just brought light to it, let's maybe consider that one first when we go to vote on these so that we can carve that one out first and then try to have some continuity on the other seven. So, thank you for that. Is there any further discussion from the board? Seeing, hearing none, would anybody like to make a motion on number four, case number UDP Z two-two-zero-zero-six?
I'll move to recommend the approval of case UDP to the one you just read, based on the findings of fact and, and also retain, retain the...
Subject to the conditions.
Retain the conditions that were adopted under the PUD ordinance.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Steve Gannon, seconds.
Madam Secretary? Well, before we go to a vote, is there any additional dialogue, conversation? No? Madam Secretary?
Mr. Rotella?
Yes.
Mr. Bronco?
Yes.
Ms. Firding?
Yes.
Mr. Gannon?
Yes.
Chair Wimmer?
Yes.
Next case, number three, UDP Z two-two-zero-zero-five. Would anybody like to make a motion on that?
Okay, I'll move it. Well, I move to recommend approval of case number UDP Z two-two-zero-zero-five, based on the findings of fact and the staff report and the testimony that we've heard tonight.
We have a motion? Do we have a second?
Steve Gannon, seconds.
Any additional conversation? Madam Secretary?
Mr. Rotella?
Yes.
Mr. Bronco?
Yes.
Ms. Firding?
Yes.
Mr. Gannon?
Yes.
Chair Wimmer?
Yes.
Case number five, UDP Z two-two-zero-zero-seven. Somebody like to make a motion on that?
I move to recommend approval of case number UDP Z two-two-zero-zero-seven, based on the following, on the findings of fact and the staff report and the testimony heard tonight.
We have a motion? Do we have a second?
Steve Gannon, seconds.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Madam Secretary?
Mr. Bronco?
Yes.
Ms. Firding?
Yes.
Mr. Gannon?
Yes.
Mr. Rotella?
Yes.
Chair Wimmer?
Yes.
Case number six, UDP Z two-two-zero-zero-eight. Would somebody like to make a motion on that case?
I move to recommend approval of case number UDP Z two-two-zero-zero-eight, based on the, on the findings of fact, the staff report, and the testimony heard tonight. And I am so glad that we are finally rezoning this park.
We have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Madam Secretary?
Mr. Bronco?
Yes.
Ms. Firding?
Yes.
Mr. Gannon?
Yes.
Mr. Rotella?
Yes.
And Chair Wimmer?
Yes.
Case number seven, UDP Z two-two-zero-one-zero. Would somebody like to make a motion on that case?
I move to recommend approval of case number UDP Z two-two-zero-one-zero, based on the findings of fact and the, and the city staff report and the testimony heard tonight.
We have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Madam Secretary?
Mr. Bronco?
Yes.
Ms. Firding?
Yes.
Mr. Gannon?
Yes.
Mr. Rotella?
Yes.
And Chair Wimmer?
Yes.
Case number eight, UDP Z two-two-zero-one-one. Would somebody like to make a motion?
I'll move that case Z two-two-zero-zero-eight, based on the findings of fact and the staff report and the testimony heard tonight.
Mary, I think I'm gonna ask you to repeat the case number, just for clarity.
Yes, I would do that, but I can't find my, my hand out, so I was kind of just going off of, of what number?
Case number eight.
Eight? Two-two-zero-zero-eight?
No. Case number eight, UDP Z two-two-zero-one-one.
Oh, thank you. Zero-one-one. I guess I could have figured that out.
Number nine.
Okay.
Do you want me to do it again? For the record?
Yes. I move to recommend approval of case number UDP Z two-two-zero-one-one, based on the findings of fact and the staff report and the testimony heard tonight.
So, we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Steve?
Second.
We have a second? Any further discussion? Madam Secretary?
Ms. Firding?
Yes.
Mr. Gannon?
Yes.
Mr. Rotella?
Yes.
Mr. Bronco?
Yes.
Chair Wimmer?
Yes.
Case number nine, UDP Z two-two-zero-one-two. Do we have a motion?
I move to recommend approval of case number UDP Z two-two-zero-one-two, based on the finding of fact and the staff report and the, and the testimony heard tonight.
We have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Or I'm sorry, Madam Secretary? You're getting carried away.
Ms. Firding?
Yes.
Mr. Gannon?
Yes.
Mr. Rotella?
Yes.
Mr. Bronco?
Yes.
And Chair Wimmer?
Yes.
Case number ten, UDP Z two-two-zero-one-three. Do we have a motion?
I move to recommend approval of case number UDP Z two-two-zero-one-three, based on the fi, findings of fact and the staff report and based on the testimony heard tonight.
We have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Madam Secretary?
Mr. Gannon?
Yes.
Mr. Rotella?
Yes.
Mr. Bronco?
Yes.
Ms. Firding?
Yes.
And Chair Wimmer?
Yes.
Thank you for the efficiency on that. All right. We'll move on to case number twelve, UDP T two-two-zero-zero-four. Good morning, good evening, Ms. Grant.
Good evening, Chair and members of the board. Carly Anne Grant with Urban Design and Planning. Case number twelve is item UDP dash two, T twenty-two-zero-zero-four. It is a request to amend section forty-seven dash ten point ten, a list of permitted and conditional uses for the Commerce Center zoning district to add a water treatment plant to the use table. As proposed, a water treatment plant located greater than three hundred feet from residential property will be permitted by right and would require a site plan Level Two review or just Development Review Committee. And then a water treatment plant that's located within three hundred feet or less from residential property will require a conditional use permit, which is a site plan Level Three or Planning and Zoning Board approval. That's my proposed text amendment. I'm here for any questions. And also, if there's any specific questions regarding a water treatment plant and the operations of that, Steve Hilberg with Public Works Department is here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Are there any questions from the board to the city?
Hi, Steve.
Do you have a question, John?
No. I haven't seen Steve in a long time. We used to serve on a board together. It's good to see him.
Seeing no inquiries of the city, is there anybody from the public here to speak on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public meeting and bring it back to the dais. Does anybody want to have further discussion or make a motion? No water treatment plant?
Okay. Uh, can we just move to approve this? Hold on, hold on. I move to approve, recommend approval of case number UDP T two-two-zero-zero-four. The board hereby finds, finds that the text amendments of the ULDR consisted with a comprehensive that the text amendments of the ULDR consisted with a comprehensive plan. Is that the right one?
Sorry, I couldn't hear. Is that a motion to recommend approval of case number UDP T two-two-zero-zero-four based on the findings of fact and the staff report and the testimony heard from staff?
Yep, that's what it was.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Madam Secretary?
Ms. Firding?
Yes.
Mr. Gannon?
Yes.
Mr. Rotella?
Yes.
Mr. Bronco?
Yes.
And Chair Wyman?
Yes. Last case of the evening, case number thirteen, UDP T two-two-zero-zero-five. Ms. Grant, you're away.
Actually, I'm requesting a deferral for that item.
Motion to defer?
Oh, yeah.
To date certain August seventeen?
Defer until what date? I'm sorry.
That's okay, for date certain of, uh, I believe it's-
August seventeen.
August seventeen.
That's what I saw on here. I just didn't know whether that's still what you wanted to defer to. So, there is a motion to defer. Is there a second?
Yes.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Secretary?
Ms. Firding?
Yes.
Mr. Gannon?
Yes.
Mr. Rotella?
Yes.
Mr. Bronco?
Yes.
Chair Wyman?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone.
And I believe, Mr. Hetzel, you're gonna come enlighten us about some units.
Good evening, Jim Hetzel, Principal Urban Planner. I'm going to enlighten you on units, yes.
Jim, can you speak into the microphone one more, please?
Yeah, for sure, sorry.
Thank you.
Uh, let me pull that up.
And Chair, I'd just like to clarify, this is an item under the good of the city and it's in response to the board's request at the prior meeting, so in case anybody in the audience is wondering.
Okay, great, thank you. Yes, Ella, as mentioned by Ella, this was requested by the Planning and Zoning Board at last month's meeting. Pretty much keep it simple, but I'm gonna kinda give you a big overview about how unit allocations for both the RACs and the FLEX units are handled throughout the city, in different nuances that occur. So, if you look at the screen, we have application types and approving bodies, uh, for the particular application type. So, we're gonna start off with downtown. Downtown has RAC units. It also has FLEX units, because it's in the FLEX zone. The review process is different in the downtown RAC, what, depending on what you're doing. If you're simply asking for RAC or FLEX units without asking for deviations to your site plan, you are a level two, which is DRC, Site Plan Level Two, which is Development Review Committee, subject to commission call-up. So, that's what the red Xs mean, is those are subject to call-up by the city commission. You'll see the third item under the downtown RAC is for Planning and Zoning Board approval, because that's unique in projects abutting the river, the new river. Whether they're asking for RAC or FLEX units, have to come to you, because that, that's a requirement in our code. The next section is the northwest section, northwest RAC. Whether you ask for RAC or FLEX units, you could see the difference between what's a red X versus the, not a red X, for the, for those type of units. So, the RACs do not, are not subject to call-up, but the FLEX units are. The next section is the south RAC. You have RAC units for the south, which we don't have that many, um, those, and also the FLEX. Now, those are also different depending on what you're doing, because the RAC units, if they're five units or less, is a actual site plan level one, we call it, which is administrative. It's just handled by staff. The other ones are subject to call-up. The beach is slightly different, because it, uh, what recently got adopted by our commission, and there's this, uh, specific approval process depending on what you're doing. So, that's why you kinda see an X in both the PZB and the, the commission columns for that. But, the FLEX units are not available for the beach. The beach, the barrier islands, except for two commercial nodes, but the central beach tract is not available for FLEX units. So, that's why you don't see that mentioned there. Uptown has FLEX units only. And the difference with that one is whether the project meets all the development standards and is not requesting any deviations, which if it's a deviation request, it's the second one down below, which would come to the Planning and Zoning Board. But, if they meet all the requirements for the uptown standards, they stop at site plan level two with staff. The city's FLEX zone in general does talk about, uh, FLEX units on non-residential land use categories, which is like the corridors. That has come to the Planning and Zoning Board. It has. We did not change that. Uh, if you're asking for FLEX for mixed use, it would come in front of the board here. Also, commercial acreage, the commercial FLEX acreage would come in front of the Planning and Zoning Board for that request. And lastly is the affordable housing. We do have a line item in our FLEX charts, or FLEX units, if you will, that we set aside, affordable housing. That is a site plan level two, because it's pretty much permitted throughout the entire city if someone wants to do an affordable housing project. So, that's kind of a quick overview of how units are allocated throughout the city. You know, take any questions.
Is that the end of your presentation?
Yes.
Are there any questions for Mr. Hetzel?
Just can we get a copy?
I'm sorry?
Can we just get a copy of this?
Yeah.
I, I think that, that's probably easily enough. Uh, John, do you have a question?
Oh, yeah. I have a question. John, I try to make it quick. Um, so, Jim, this is really helpful. This is good to see. So, my questions would be, on the site plan level one, level two, level three, level four, all of these applications would require the same site plan checklist that we typically go through then to get the units?
The same site plan checklist?
In other words, you need an architectural site plan, you need extra renovations-
Yes.
-genereering, the same old rigmarole.
Yep, site plan rigmaroles.
There's no way around that to get a unit on a property.
Nope. No. Site plan submittal is required for the allocation of FLEX, and actually for the RACs, for, I mean, that's a new development. It's subject to our site plan review process, depending on the level. And you have to do full drawings and plans for that.
Right.
Yep.
And then, the next question I would have is, one of the, one of the things that we, well, I was curious to see, and I think we all agreed at the last meeting, it's in the meeting minutes, is, we wanted to get an idea of where all the units are now. Like, where are they spoken for? Which properties actually use those units? And which ones are sitting on them? How long have they sit, been sitting on them? How many times have they-
So-
Applied for extensions?
That, that's a little bit more information that we would have to gather, because there's been a lot of projects that, because of the state emergency extensions, we have to grant them those, we have to grant those extensions to them, because it's a state emergency.
Right.
So, if they had FLEX allocation for the project originally, and it happened to be a 2016 project approval, and they've gotten their extensions, it can go until the time, and they could be holding on to the units, I think is what you're asking.
Yeah.
Uh, we would have to put that information together for you. Um, I don't think there's that many projects. I think most of them have been built, and most of them have been in the downtown. Um, when we unified the FLEX zones into a single receiving zone, we included all the RACs. Um, and, uh, obviously, the development interest is in downtown the most, and so those have been getting those units allocated to them.
Okay.
Yep.
And, and while I appreciate this part of it, because I think this is super important, and it really touches on some of the things I was concerned with, I really wanna understand, you know, where we are, because there are certain RAC areas that don't have any availability right now, right? It's zeroed out.
So-
Or close to it.
The, the three RACs, well, there's four RACs, but the beach is not eligible. The downtown only has about three-hundred RAC entitlement units, um, based on changes to projects that have gone through. One of them was Marina Lofts, the Rain Tree Residence, I think they're calling themselves now, did not use the full amount that were allocated to them on the original approval. So, that difference went back into the pool available. So, that's why there's about three-hundred available in the downtown. The south has less than two-hundred, I believe, um, South Andrews, and the northwest has about thirty-five-hundred of RAC units. The, the FLEX units are permitted to go anywhere in the RACs and along corridors. And those are kinda sporadic, except for the core. That's where the majority of the FLEX units have gone. So, there are projects in, throughout the entire city that have gotten extensions, so we'll have to pull that information if you're requesting it. Uh, but I believe you have to go through the city commission to direct us to do that, because that's a lot more work to gather that information.
I remember you had prepared something like that in the past. You had shown me a spreadsheet with all the developments and, you know, how many-
Did I?
And I always change the last-
It's probably our table, our reporting table is probably what you're thinking about, because we have to keep track of all of it.
Right.
Yeah.
Seems like something you should have handy, you know, in case somebody applies for units.
Well, we don't do that, we only do that for the, the regional activity sites. We don't do it for citywide. So, we would have to go gather that information, see if who pulled in extensions for, say, a mixed-use project on the corridors, because like that, we don't have to report, per se. Like, what you're thinking is the RAC tables, those have to be submitted.
And I really wanna understand, too, is the history of it, because I know at one point, like, the south had its own units, the downtown had its own units, the north had its own units. I just wanna understand that, too, and how things got changed, because I'm sure it had something to do with our Planning and Zoning Board at that time that changed it.
Probably not. It probably had to do with the land use plan amendment process, because when you do a land use plan on a LUPA, and you amend the city's plan, you have to do an analysis of public infrastructure and services. You have to look at schools, affordable housing, parks and RAC. And there was probably something, and we'll do some research if we're directed to do so, that limited the number of units for the south RAC, because the requirements for mitigation might have been an issue. You know, that's what happens, is when you put more entitlements out there, there's more impact. And if we were the applicant on it, which we probably were, we probably saw there was a few, you know, increasing that number only means more that the city would have to deal with. That could be a scenario. We'd have to research that. Um, I know with downtown, you know, the most recent amendment with that, uh, in 2016, I think, you know, there was a lot to look at. The, the LUPAs with the regional activity centers, you're securing entitlements for that area, and whatever impacts that, and those entitlements have, you have to mitigate for. So, there could be something there, why the numbers aren't as high for south section. Uh, we'd have to dig into the research, but I'm not, I wasn't here at that time, but that's what be, my guess, maybe why they limited it.
And that's why I'm curious, because-
Yeah.
I wasn't around, I wasn't involved in that either, but, you know, I've heard this and that, and I don't know what's true, but if there's, so, we as the board, um, we're kind of the, not the decision-makers, but when it comes to the code and to development, you know, if there's something that needs to be improved in the code, then if units or allocating units, um, finding more units, applying for more units, um, all of those things to the county need to be done, then we as a board, I think, need to voice that, right, so that we can see development throughout the city.
Yeah, most certainly. And having been in this profession for, you know, however many, how many years I wanna say I've been in the profession, but I can tell you, like, the land use plan amendment process is pretty extensive. And when you try to secure entitlements, whether it's commercial or residential, whatever it is, um, the higher those numbers are, the more you have to mitigate or plan for or prepare or do infrastructure improvements. I guess it's going off and on. Um, but, yeah, it's, it's definitely worth the conversation. I think even the planning staff has, you know, pondered those questions, um, as far as moving forward, but, um, I can answer any other questions for you.
Jim, I have a question. I guess, I got two questions. One, when you say we gotta go to the commission to ask for that, I guess, what is the proper way to make that request? And the second question that I have, you talked about the units that are available. Does that also count affordable housing units? It seemed to me when the, you know, some years ago, when the number of units were proposed, there were, you know, were, um, mandated for Fort Lauderdale downtown, there was also a certain number of affordable housing units that were supposed to be built along with them. So, when you talk about two-hundred units here and three-hundred units here, is there as well a separate pool of affordable housing units that are sitting someplace, or?
So, there are a couple of things. First, let me clarify, when I said the commission, I mean, if you want us to do more research or work for you, you have to communicate that through the commission for them to direct us. So, I just wanna be clear with that. Um, the, uh, units throughout the city, uh, there are affordable units tied to our FLEX tables, which is set aside of units. I think we have about seventeen-hundred left, um, that are available for, say, an affordable housing developer that wants to build a project on a commercial land use somewhere else in, or somewhere in the city. We pull from that particular table, that line item. Recently, what's been going through, I believe Adam has presented to you all, you know, the affordable housing effort, which went to the city commission, which you all saw, went to the commission for first reading, ties into bonuses and incentives to get affordable housing built. So, that's another approach. The other one that you're referencing is a set-aside. So, the reason why the set-aside was created for downtown was the fact that the city did not have a city affordable housing policy at the time that land use, land use amendment went through the process. So, we had to do something to address the topic. The solution that the city went was a set-aside of fifteen percent for those five-thousand units in the downtown. So, there's multiple, uh, prongs to deal with the topic. Uh, it just depends on what aspect, you know, we're trying to achieve and the policies that we're implementing.
Okay. Mary?
Okay. So, it just seems to me that this chart you did is great, but the chart with the numbers would be really helpful. Um, and I would think, just like you do on the, on the central beach, where you have that great chart and we can just look at it and see how many units, how many trips, how many of this, how many of that, that a similar chart would be really helpful to anybody, whether it's just a citizen or-
Yeah, we can produce those charts. I can, if you're trying to find out how many units are left, I can pretty much answer that for you. I, I mean, we have very little FLEX left that, with applications coming in, we're not gonna have any FLEX units left in probably the next three to four months.
And how many is that?
Um, what's available now, well, right now, we requested our final release of FLEX from the Power County Planning Council, and it's about thirteen-hundred that we're requesting, the, the final release. They're gonna be accounted for with the projects that are coming through the door. So, there will be no FLEX available. Now, what we're going to do is notify applicants. They can go, like, basically on a waiting list, if you will, like, if a project expires, the next one that's in line gets the units.
But, can I just ask one more question?
Hmm?
Can we just make a chart of all of these, the affordable housing?
Well, I was just, I was gonna say, why don't we suggest-
We have the tables. We can submit the tables, for sure.
Create, to have the pla, planning department create a comprehensive schedule that reflects citywide, the different variety of units and where they're available, just a complete comprehensive schedule that we can, including the beach. I mean, we listen to the, to items citywide, so I don't wanna hear just about the beach. I don't wanna hear just, you know, I'd like to see a comprehensive schedule that reflects all the units.
Right.
So, we have a FLEX table that we track all of the FLEX policy, both commercial and residential FLEX units, along with the affordable. We have that table. We have the RAC tables, which, because we're required to monitor those, those that we can provide to you. What it doesn't show is the citywide, um, at, anywhere outside the FLEX or outside the RACs, we don't have tables for that. Like, if you wanna know what's available as far as residential still to be built, like, what residential land use or zone is available for building, we'd have to gather that information, because we don't track that. So, it just depends on what you're asking with citywide versus these ones that we already track.
Well, you could give us the, you could email us the ones you already have, and then we can see where the gaps are and fine-tune that next month. I don't know.
That's what I thought we were asking for.
It just, yeah, it just seems like it would be helpful.
I mean, is, is the goal to find out what is available as far as residential development throughout the city?
Well, sort of like getting your allowance, Jim. So, you get five dollars, and if you wanna spend four bucks, you just realize you got a buck to last year the rest of the week.
Yeah.
You know, that, that doesn't work to us. So, I'd, I'd like to know what we've got in, in the pool-
Right.
As you call it.
Yep.
And to see what's coming down the pipeline. You know, if we've got a thousand units in the pool, and there's three projects coming up at three-hundred units apiece, you know, we start going, okay.
Yeah, I, I can tell you that's the case, because we're running out of units. So, we have applications coming in that we can, we're eventually going to have to say, we don't have units for you. Now, the options we've been telling applicants is the Geller Amendment, which I think you've all heard, tied to affordable housing, opens up a new pool of units that we don't know what that number is, because the county did not establish a maximum or a number to pull from. Um, we're working through that through our adoption of our, you know, section of our code that Adam's working on, to kind of figure out how we're gonna do that, because there is no number, if you will. It's based on an incentive program that has density not really discussed as far as literally fifty units per acre or whatever. In that sense, you can do what fits on your property if you follow the affordable housing requirements in the Geller Amendment.
Well, I will, I will volunteer. I was gonna say woefully, but I won't say woefully, but I will volunteer that I feel that I am under-informed when it comes to this, to be making some of the decisions that I need to vote on. So, I would, I would appreciate more information. And if it's a request that we have to go through the city commission to have them ask you guys to do, I greatly appreciate it.
Yep.
Sorry, it's more work. I know you guys are already buried in work, but I don't wanna make-
The tables are no problem to provide, because we have those, but anything beyond that, I think you have to go through communication to the commission.
So, I'll just redo what you said to a motion.
Okay.
I, can we just discuss this a little further, because I'm sitting here and I'm hearing that there's two-hundred units left here, there's three-hundred units left there, so there's thirteen-hundred FLEX coming, and they're already spoken for. You seem to know this right off the top of your head. Obviously, there's a chart somewhere that says that, because you're not the only guy who knows this. who knows this.
No.
If you are, then we got to get an insurance policy.
No, 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 no insurance policy on me.
I'm worried.
So if I could please clarify...
Insurance policy on me.
I would love to have seen that information tonight, that's what we asked...
Time to numbers, please, no.
That's what we asked for last time, and I'm not going to request a subsidy commission. I think we're well within our authority to direct you guys.
No, 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 just for clarity, we, we have to go to the commission, yeah.
So if I could help clarify...
I looked at our duties...
Hang on, hang on, one person at a time.
Member Baranco.
One person at a time.
So if, if it's a matter of providing the data, we have tables and charts, to your point, that we track this information, we can provide that data, that's, that's available. I think what Jim is trying to state is that if there's additional analysis the board is asking for, we would just require some policy direction to do an additional analysis. But if all you're requesting is the data and tables that show what's in the south rack, what's in the downtown, and what's in these other areas, we can certainly provide that and share that with the board, that's not a problem.
I, I, I hear what you're saying, Ellen, and I think that's going down the right path, but I don't think we should be having to ask for it every time, I think it should be provided to us in some standard measure.
Well, it is provided in respect to the projects that are in front of you. So if there's a project in front of you and we're looking at what's remaining, that information is in the staff report.
That is correct. Dwayne Spence, Assistant City Attorney. So what I'm hearing in the discussion is a, a condensing of all of the density in one discussion with regards to, when we're talking about separate pools of residential density that the city tracks. As stated by the board members, staff tracks flex units, downtown units, that information can be provided to the board. With regards to an overall density of the city, that's what the Land Use Plan Map provides for the entire city, and to know how many of those units are used as a monumental task, and I don't think that's what the board is asking for, but I think that's what I was kind of hearing from Jim, and I just want to clarify that, that, that would take a number of years to accumulate and get information on, because that is literally every residential parcel within the city, and determining what units are, are going to be available for those parcels, and that's, that's kind of an in-depth study. With regards to the information provided to the boards, in the quasi-judicial process, the code outlines the condition, the criteria that the board must consider in grant, in granting these, granting the applications for development permits. My word of caution is that you may be veering away from the criteria in the code to consider whether or not the project is worthy of these units, because in your mind, there's a limitation on units, and you think that there's a better project that's coming before, or coming after this project, that you think is more worthy of those units. That would be a nightmare for me as an attorney in representing the board if you were to deny a project based on that criteria. So the information is available, the information that you need to determine whether or not a development permit should be approved or denied, is provided to you adequately for each case, and I just want to caution you against using any other information in determining whether or not to approve or deny a quasi-judicial case that comes before the board.
And I would tell you, that was not my intent, but I still would like to know how many units there are, of what type, especially after hearing everybody's conversation tonight.
I don't think we're talking about one case.
I don't think this is, I, I mean, how many, Bill brought up affordable units, and I, I just think it would be, we should, there should be a chart somewhere where you can look and see how many flex units, how many units, how many affordable, whatever, whatever category or bucket you're putting them in. And if you want to limit that to what you have on this chart for a start, and then we see where we go, but I, I don't, I don't know why it's a mystery, I just...
Yeah, that's what bothers me more about it, it is a mystery, and I'm not speaking as a Planning and Zoning member, I'm speaking as the local planning agency member, okay? So when we're talking about the broader code, and, you know, the local planning agency that we are, we shouldn't be making dis, informed decisions and knowing what we're dealing with. If we feel we need to advise commission that, hey, we've got a problem, you know, housing costs are out of control in the city of Fort Lauderdale, there's nothing affordable for anybody at my office to, to live anywhere near my office, you know, they need to know about that. If we need to go out and do an extensive study, then it is what it is, but we need to know where we're at to be able to make an informed decision, and I think we have every right to direct staff to provide us with as much information as they can, that they have. And I think I was very clear, and I read back the, the minutes, and I'm looking at this, and this is what we were asking for last time, and we're talking about it again. And I'm not going to make a decision one way or another on a case based on, nah, there's only 300 units left, yeah, let's hold out for a better project. That's not at all where we're going with this. We're just getting to that level where we better start talking about it. Not after we run out, we need to talk about it now. So that, that's the reason I asked for the information in the first place.
I understand, and I believe staff will be providing you with those tables.
I just wish we would have had it tonight.
Jim, I just got two quick questions. You talk about the Geller Amendment. The Geller Amendment, as it relates to this affordable housing, if someone is meeting the criteria under the Geller Amendment, are those units, I mean, part of them are affordable housing and the other units that are built, market rate housing that are built, are those coming out of the pool, or that's just coming out of?
So there's no pool, the count, there's no established pool.
They're in addition, but they're, those units are in addition to the units you just talked about.
Right, right. But there's no, there's no number that we're drawing down from when it comes to the Geller...
If you're saying there's 300 units in a given area, and somebody comes in and meets the Geller criteria and builds a 300-unit project with 10% affordable housing, those couple hundred units that they're building isn't coming out of that 300-unit pool?
No, it's a whole separate...
Okay. And then, the second question I got is just a personal interest in knowing, when you say "commercial flex," what is that exactly? I understand it as it relates to the residential.
So if they, you, in front of the Planning and Zoning Board, you've had projects come in where they have to rezone a portion of the property to CB, which is community business zoning, because the underlying land use is residential, that's a commercial flex allocation, commercial acreage, and we put acreage on it, it's not units, because you're taking the residential land use and putting commercial on it, that's an acreage allocation.
So it's not a matter of square footage, I mean, of, of, of commercial property or shopping center or whatever?
If I may, and sorry to intrude on the planner's portfolio. So what happens in Broward County is that the Broward County Commission adopts a land use plan for the entire county that says how much residential density you can have in a certain area, how much commercial, how much industrial, and so they have land use designations throughout the county. They have the same designations for the city of Fort Lauderdale. Then the city of Fort Lauderdale takes a look at their map, and we adopt our own map. And we can't go greater than them for the same areas, but we can go less than them in those same areas. And so when the city chooses to lower the intensity in a particular area or lower the density, we get additional units, which we call flex units, and we get flex acreage. So what the county says is, your plan has to match our plan, our plan, or have the same number of units or commercial acreage, and you can amend your own plan by moving things around within your city, as long as you don't exceed the number of commercial acreage or the residential density. If you want to increase beyond what's provided on the Broward County plan, you'll have to amend your plan and the Broward County plan. So commercial flex is one of those mechanisms that allows you to take, move around the commercial acreage from one part of the city and move it to another part of the city. And so the table will show you that you have a valuable acreage, commercial acreage, that you can move to another part of the city, which used to be within particular flex zones, but now that we have the unified flex zones, you, you can move it within that unified flex zone. And know that may be a little confusing, but, but, but I hope that kind of clarifies that, because flexibility does not exceed the amount of density that's allowed on the Broward County map, but because we've had less density on ours, we're allowed to go up to what's permitted on the Broward County map.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any more discussion?
So are we going to wait and see what we get next month and go from there, or?
We're, staff is going to send those reports...
Well, I can tell you, you can make an ask now, and I don't think that the city is convening before our next, oh, they are convening right before their next meeting, right? The Tuesday before.
So just see what we get.
That's, that's, that's up to the board's pleasure.
All right, so we're going to get all these charts, and then we'll see what we don't.
I'd like to receive them as available.
You'll get the charts, and we'll see if there's additional information that you, if you want, if you wanted something more than what's provided. So I, I would recommend that the board wait on the, the charts, and that staff will provide you with the charts, and you can see if there's additional data that you need, and whether it's within the purview of the board, or if you would have to ask the commission for that.
If we can get them when they're available, so that the next time we come to meet, we've had a chance to review them and come up with whatever questions we got.
Don't send them as part of the package, send them, send them ahead of time.
Can you email that?
We'll, we'll email it out to, to every board member.
Before, before the next package.
Before the meeting.
Thank you, Jim.
Yep, okay.
Is there any other items come up this evening?
I had, I had one thing.
Mary?
Yeah, I would just like to send a communication to the city commending the planning staff and the parks and rec staff for all the work that they've done so far on bringing, on rezoning properties to park, and the work they're going to be doing in the future, but I just think they've done a great job in a short time, and so I would just like our board to recognize that and send a communication to the city saying that. And that's a motion.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, is that it?
That's it.
Motion adjourned. Second, so moved. Have a good night.